All right, we're going to get started. Sorry, gentlemen.
We're sure.
We're on. She's not coming today. It's just the three of us. So I'll explain after the meeting's over. So, welcome to the planning board. Today is Thursday, June 18th. I am joined -- my name is Emily Ennis. I am the chair of the board. I'm joined by my colleagues.
Mike Kelly.
And Alex Whiteside.
Tim Swirwinski, Assistant Town Planner.
Great. And I'd like to announce that we do have a new clerk. She will be joining us in July, I think, for the first meeting. Her name is Julia Gatman, and we are very much looking forward to having her onboard. I should also note that this meeting is both taped and we're bringing broadcast live tonight. Excellent, thank you. So tonight's agenda, we're going to hit some administrative items first, including the approval of past minutes. Our next meeting dates are June 25th, where we'll have a continuation of 333 Brush Hill Road and a continuation of Windmere at Brush Hill. We also have a site plan approval for 11 Bryant Avenue. We'll be discussing the master plan and discussing our process for looking at zoning for this summer and leading into October's town meeting. The next item on the agenda will be citizen speak. We have no new business today, but the primary event for tonight is the public hearing starting at 7:00 for the special permit and site plan approval for Thayer Nursery, and this is a continuation. And then we have, under old business articles and the process for October 2015 town meeting. We'll just do a quick check-in on that. So with that, I'd like to start with the approval of the past minutes. What do we have, Tim?
We have minutes from April 9th and April 23rd that have been distributed to the board, hopefully reviewed, so if you all are ready to approve.
Have they been distributed in hard copy?
April 9th was distributed in hard copy. I'm not sure if April 23rd was distributed in hard copy.
I haven't actually -- I haven't read them. So I'm not going to vote on them. That would mean there would be only two votes, even if you two wanted to approve them.
Could you pass these down? I have incorporated your comments from April 9th into the April 9th minutes.
You took my April 9th comment?
Yes. And I am--
Well, then I would be agreeable to approving those.
Fair. Would you like to make a motion on that?
I would like to make a motion to approve the April 9th.
That was the fastest second ever. So, all those in favor of the April 9th?
Aye.
Great. And we will hold the April 23rd till after everybody has had a chance to review them. Hold the 23rd. Okay.
Emily, if you would mind signing that right there.
Right here? No, no, actually, it's the secretary who signs them. Oh, no, it's pre -- yeah, sorry. Pre-switch over.
Pretty soon, Mike, you'll get your chance--
All right.
--to sign the minutes.
So our next meeting dates are June 25th. I talked about the agenda earlier, July 9th and July 23rd. We also have a public workshop for zoning on June 29th. That's a Monday evening. It's at 7:00 at Fuller Village, and we will be doing an interactive series of workshops with members of the public on the zoning items. Tim, I have to say, has been doing a fantastic job getting the word out to pretty much everybody he possibly can identify so far, so thank you very much, Tim.
Did you try to send out another email on that June 29th meeting a couple of days ahead of time, if you think of it?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah. You'll know about it on the 25th also, because we'll talk about it.
Good point.
But a reminder to everybody else doesn't hurt, so that would be great. And then, just a reminder to all of -- well, all of both of you, is your questions and pictures are due to me tomorrow. Anytime tomorrow's good. Tomorrow ends at midnight, so any time before midnight is good.
I have asked Mr. Clark to come up with five development plans for condominium developments. And, Tim, would you tell him that we want those submitted tomorrow by 5:00?
Excellent. Or midnight.
Do you want to stay late?
Really?
And I mean, he can take as much time as he needs to submit these things, but, okay, so that's great.
Great, thank you, Alex. And questions? You have to do the questions, though. Otherwise, it'll be me making them up, and I might not think of the same things you will.
Okay.
Okay, excellent. And three to five questions each, or, you know, three questions. Whatever you come up with would be fantastic. All right, so we've got about five minutes before the public hearing. I'm going to ask if there's anybody here for citizen speak, and people speaking should be those who are not speaking at the public hearing. This is for any other issues that somebody wants to bring forward to the boards. So is there anybody here for anything other than there? All right, seeing none, we will move on. Let's just continue to talk about the zoning articles then, since we have those few minutes to fill. So, as I said, it's going to be at Fuller Village. It's at the 1372 Brush Hill Road site, so people should go to that site. There is parking available. We don't expect that it will last longer than 9:00. We may even finish a little bit earlier. Tim and I are tightening up the presentation in the next week, so we'll be ready for that.
What are people supposed to gear themselves to do?
So, we're going to be doing a short presentation on what it is the board will be looking at in terms of zoning. And the flyer went out with all the different categories of the things we're looking at. As part of that, I will introduce the board members and what they'll be working on, so that people know who to look for to ask questions. And then, we're going to be doing something called a visual preference survey. That's what the images are for, so that we'll show a series of images for each category. I think I used signs as the example last time. And ask people to let us know, do they like them, do they not like them, is it somewhere in between? And then we'll be using that data to figure out how we should look at the sign design guidelines, or how we should consider, in terms of the ones where we're looking at density, how dense people like projects to be. And then, after that, we're going to have boards up. Fuller Village was a very good place during the master plan process, because we could put the boards all the way around the room, and people could move from board to board. We'll have the questions up. There should be questions that can be answered by a yes, no, and not sure, or a yes, no, and maybe. We'll have people answer those questions. Each of us will be in the general area of what we're working on. Mike, you're going to be our floating person, so you can direct -- you can help direct everybody there, so we can answer specific questions. And then we'll be collecting that data, and then we'll wrap up with a discussion of where the process is going from here. So you guys remember, but I'll say for the public, that in July, we'll be presenting the first round of the draft language, looking for public input. In August, we'll be presenting the second round, and that's what will go to the warrant committee and the Board of Selectmen. I still need to meet with them. Tim and I are talking about ways that we can do online comments on both the stuff that we're doing in June and the draft zoning for July and August, so that we can have an online review period, so that people who can't make the meetings, because it's summer, will still have a chance to weigh in. So by the time we get to town meeting, we'll have had the three public workshops. We'll have had discussions with the warrant committee and the Board of Selectmen, and we'll have had our own formal public hearing in September.
Well, I mean, we do have a open-meeting law issue about any sort of online dialogue.
It's not dialogue with board members. It's a way of them submitting comments to the board. There's no dialogue.
It's like what's been going on this week with us. We've been getting a lot of comments directed to us.
I think the comments that I've seen have all gone to the planning office, and these comments would all go to the planning office. They're not comments that go to the board members. So they're collected by the planning office, they're registered. Actually, we did -- we received comments during the master plan process, the same way. They get registered and then presented to the board, the way we get any other information here. So there should be no open-meeting law issues. There are no dialogue issues among people asking for comments. Everything would come to us and then be answered as part of the public process.
Well, I mean, will they be digested and formatted, or will they just be Xeroxed and given to the board members?
I would expect that there would be some form of digestion and formatting. I would also expect that each board member who's taken the lead on an article would be working to help digest and format them. Fortunately, this is something that we've been able to do for the first time, because we have additional capacity in Tim's position. So he has been working very hard on this, and I look forward to him continuing. And that takes us to 7:00. So we are going to open the public hearing for Thayer Nursery. This is a public hearing on a site plan approval, a special permit approval. So where we are is the board has been reviewing an application for a landscaping business. We are ensuring that we fully understand the proposed business, the impacts of that business, and the proposed solution to mitigate those impacts. In some cases, the impacts of this landscaping business increase the impacts of conditions already present for the nursery business. For these conditions, the board may consider mitigation measures that may reduce the impacts of both the proposed landscaping business and the nursery business. Now, you know, we only have three members here tonight. Brian Fers will review the tape and the materials and certify that he has reviewed them, and then will be allowed to vote. Planning board members, actually, any committee member, can do that under state law, but you can only miss one meeting. Cheryl Tagayas is actually not eligible to vote on this project, because she was not a member of the board when the public hearings first started last fall. So there are four members who can vote on the project, and--
Last March.
Sorry?
Last March.
Oh, last March. Saying, "Thank you, Alex." There are four members of the board who can vote on this, and a special permit requires four out of the five members of the board to vote in favor. So that's where the board is. I want to remind everybody that the application and the zoning are for the landscape business and not the nursery. That is permitted under a different process. We'll be having public comments as part of this, and I will be reminding everybody of the rules for public testimony when we get to that point. Tonight's process is we're going to hear a report from the staff on the outstanding items and new information that has been received, and we're going to get an update from the applicant on those outstanding items. The board members will be allowed to ask questions on those -- on the updates. Then we'll be taking information and comments from members of the public, and I'll review the rules again for that. Identification of outstanding items for the next meeting, and then the board will be discussing our process and the next steps at that point. So at this point, Tim, I'm going to recognize you to ask -- or to update us on what we've received so far.
Thank you. So this week, the applicant provided the board with some additional documents, some supplemental information, and a restatement of operations and mitigation plans, some additional plans that were distributed. I have large copies here. I have to assume that's what those boards are about. Some analysis of parking for the landscape business, which is included in your packets, and also a -- boy, I don't have it. A report from a sound engineer about sound attenuation on the site, and an analysis of the noise on the site. Those were distributed electronically. I don't have hard copies of those. I can run upstairs and make them if that -- oh, yeah, that's--
From the packet.
Oh, wonderful.
Probably just sticking to something in yours.
Good. All right, that's great news. So you've got that also, and that was distributed as soon as I got it. In terms of where we stand, I believe that the board left off, after discussing the Section 4H building plans in the bylaw. Next up is 4I, business activities. The way that the bylaw is set up, a lot of the information in Section 4 is also addressed in Section 7. Some of it's not.
Okay.
So what I've tried to do is, under the compliance column in your matrix, if something in Section 7 was already addressed, I've noted that.
Okay.
And if there's a blank in that cell, it's something that I interpreted as something that needs to be covered.
Okay, great. And so, just to note to board members, you've gotten a new matrix today that Tim did and has been updated since the last meeting. He's also just printed out the sections that are relevant to our discussion, where we're going tonight, as opposed to the whole matrix.
After the close of the public hearing, whenever that happens, I will sort of create a master matrix that has everything filled in as far as, you know, everything, which I hope will be a good tool for, you know, recommending conditions for a potential special permit. So this is just a means of keeping track. And I've been going back through my notes, through the tapes, to make sure that everything gets caught, in terms of, you know, what's discussed by the board, by the butters, by the applicant. So if you see something that's missing, please let me know.
Great, thank you very much, Tim. So at this point, I'm going to recognize Ned Corcoran to come forward and explain the information that he has sent to us on behalf of his client over the last week, and go through it for, obviously, the public. Oh, Tim, has any of this gone up on the web yet?
Just this afternoon it went up.
Okay, great.
So on the planning board website, under planning documents, there's a Thayer Nursery special permit link. Those went up today. It's as quick as I could do it, so--
Okay, great.
They're up.
Thank you very much. So Ned, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the board. Ned Corcoran here, again, on behalf of Maggie and Josh Oldfield, who are the applicants. I did submit a memorandum with some revisions to plans and some other materials. I'll go through it in benefit of the board, and then go from there. There was some discussion at some point during the last hearing, and then in the interim, whether we were going to request that Frank DeLuna, who is the farm attorney, opportunity to speak. I have no intention of having him speak. He is here to observe, but he's not here to speak.
Good.
That's a separate issue. In my opinion, it's irrelevant to the proceeding that's before us. I think he agrees with that, and, you know, he's here to observe.
Okay, great. Thank you for that clarification.
Okay.
Mr. Corcoran, could you speak up? I can't--
Yeah, I'm sorry. I guess this goes out to the television audience, but not -- doesn't fill the room. So, let's see.
If you would prefer to put that up here, so you can speak that way, that might make it easier for people to hear it too.
We've got copies, though, so--
Yeah.
Do we have copies of the stuff you're putting up?
Yes.
Yeah. So you can stay there.
Why don't we just have our copies and direct that?
Okay.
I'll just say which sheet you're dealing with.
There's the big version, if you want to get a closer look.
So I'm going to start with the existing conditions plan.
Okay.
There were a couple of holes that needed to be filled in, and I'm going to point specifically to a couple of things. One is, we have located septic systems, one each for the two dwellings on the property, and one to the side of the garden shop, and that serves the one-and-a-half bathrooms that are inside that building. There's a first-floor half-bath and a second-floor full-bath that serve the employees of the operation. The second thing on there is we have shown an adjustment to elevations in the area proximate to the row in Tevan's lot line. I think the board recalls, as part of a sidewalk, there was a swell that was expanded along and parallel to that lot line. We've adjusted. The engineers have gone out and spot-checked that and have adjusted the elevation, so it shows a low point of 100, at elevation 182. From there, let me go to the proposed conditions and drainage plan. And there are several revisions to that. One is that as part of the drainage, addressing the issues with respect to that swell, there is a proposal to lower the elevation of that swell further to elevation 180, to fill in with some crushed stone, and to install a 12-inch pipe that would run from the bottom of that swell, parallel to the coal property line tying into the proposed cul-de-sac chamber system as part of the onsite detention, and then ultimately tying into the town's stormwater system. And that would -- that pipe is proposed to take any water that would fill within that swell, pipe it to the cul-de-sac system and out. There's also a minor adjustment. The prior proposed conditions and drainage plan showed a 10-inch PVC pipe connecting between the cul-de-sac and the manhole that now changes to 12 inches. Proposing a temporary erosion control barrier in the area to the east of the wood barn during the installation of the proposed leach pits that would be connected to the end of the drain that was in the trench that was installed along the Lapori property. The notion being that we would -- there would be a pipe that would connect from that trench to this chamber to take -- pull the stormwater out and down and into the -- charged into the ground, but would install erosion control to prevent erosion during the construction. I think more significantly, there is a couple of things. One is, we propose to increase the width of the green buffer between the fence along the Lapori property line and the landcare yard, moving from six feet in width to 15 feet with an arborvitae plantings. And two other modifications to fencing, or one modification to fence, and that is that, in conjunction with the report that was obtained by Acentec, which is a sound engineering firm, the Oldfields have proposed to eliminate the sound attenuation, to do an option, one, either to install a wood fence at 15 feet, eight feet on top of one foot berm, a wood fence without sound attenuation, or a deer fence, a tensile steel deer fence with sound attenuation. And then separately, there's been some discussion whether or not the Oldfields would agree to install fencing along the Tevan's property line. They're proposing that there would be no fencing along the Tevan's property line.
And, you know, this is stuff that we spent a lot of time discussing already.
Yes.
So you might want to -- you might want to offer some reasoning for these things. If it's simply this report, then it's simply this report.
I think it is the conclusions of the report that a fence, if it is tightly put together, will serve as adequate sound attenuation, and that the distance between the proposed activity in the landcare yard and the easterly property lines is such that a fence will have a minimal benefit, and the cost to install that fence is significant. Lastly, and as we show on this, is that we propose to move the truck, the evening truck parking, back into the landcare yard. We think that's a more appropriate location. It is parking of trucks essentially out of sight from all sides, wouldn't be visible because of the fencing and the green barriers. Wouldn't be visible from the Lapori property. It's not visible from the easterly side because of the barn. It would be visible, perhaps, from Forest Street, looking past Josh Oldfield's dwelling, but it's really out of sight. And it preserves a more appropriate appearance and character for the property as you look into the property. If you were passing by in Forest Street or Hillside Street, it provides a -- maintains a more attractive appearance.
That space is 25 through 32 on the new plan?
Yep. Also, with respect to parking, I provided, and I can hand around to the board to review the parking generation, manual, that is really the bible in the area. It's prepared by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. We're more generally used to the traffic models, the ITE trip generation models for different types of uses. What's interesting, and I provided to you a copy of the cover, the table of contents, and the three uses that I think are most close, at least with respect to how the property would tend to operate, and the pages that are directly related to those, and that those are building materials lumber store, if it's from a retail perspective, not a high-end lows, or which is a high-volume, high turnover. This would be sort of more of a building lumber yard where contractors, professionals would come and pick up, and it tended to be more delivering of those products to work sites, as opposed to a large turnover of traffic.
So you're using that as a proxy for the landscaping business?
And then, also as a proxy to -- so the nursery is sort of a light industrial or warehousing, really, all of them, those are the three that really kind of relate. They're really -- most of the operations of the nursery are growing and then selling some materials. It's a very small retail component. So I think that those are the proxies that make most sense in terms of the adjustments. So I analyzed the, in both the general light industrial and the warehousing, and the numbers come out. I think that the amount of spaces that are provided for both the customer use and employee use are more than adequate to handle what would be required in each of the -- in the combination of those two cases. So we added, as opposed to just relied on one or the other, really, that during the day, each are in play, and the volume of parking needs to account for both of those Specifically, we looked at truck turning. DeSalle and Burke did a truck turning analysis for 53-foot trucks, which are the longest of the trucks that deliver to the site, both from a firewood perspective and from some of their high-quantity mulches. And that it shows that the first one is turning in, that the 53-foot truck can make it within the existing paved areas from both Hillside Street and Forest Street. I note, and I confirmed with the town's engineer, that the actual width of Forest Street is 30 feet, but the paved area is 22 feet. There's four feet of shoulder on each side of the paved area. And it's true of all over Milton. The town owns much wider than the paved areas of most of the streets, either because at one point, there was a plan to install sidewalks that otherwise have those edges, and people treat them as if they're their own. But there is four feet of area owned by the town along the Walter property line, as there is on the Thayer Nursery side. And in fact, Thayer has treated that side with a hard pack and would propose to do the same on this side, to eliminate the issue of rutting, the need for the large stones that have been placed out there today, which of themselves can be a hazard.
Do you think that would be safe for pedestrians? Because if you have no ability for pedestrians to get off the roadway when a truck is doing a turn, you've eliminated the entire four feet on either side, then where do the pedestrians go? They dive over the stone wall? They --
No, I think--
It doesn't sound safe to me.
Well, Alex, the plan shows that they can clearly make the turns within the paved way. And that's what we're saying.
But expanding the pavement, because the hard pack expansion of pavement simply expands the road, and it makes it significantly less safe.
We're simply proposing that, if that's a condition the board would like to consider--
No, I'm simply saying that I think it's an unsafe proposal.
Okay, then we'll accede to your wisdom on that, and that's a cost we won't have to incur. There was a recent attempt of a large truck coming down Forest Street illegally, making a left-hand turn onto Hillside for the sake of delivering construction materials to another project going on down the road that got hung up on that turn. Couldn't make the turn. So there's lots of truck activity out there. But these trucks, as this plan can show, can make a safe turn in and out in each direction.
And the green--
And the green, the green buffer on the side of the road is actually a significant enhancement to the character of the neighborhood.
Can I mention something, please?
You have to address the chair.
Yeah.
I've had several communication with the equestrian people in the neighborhood, and they really enjoy the fact that we've installed and done what we've done on our side. So they truly view it as a benefit to the safety of horses.
What are the materials that you'd be using for the hard pack?
It's a dense gray gravel.
And it'd be the full four-foot width of the right-of-way?
It would be the distance between the asphalt edge and the wall.
And have you talked to both the town and the property owner to see if they would be agreeable? Because you're taking it right up to the property line of that property owner.
Correct.
And the town obviously owns the property. So have you talked to them yet?
I haven't, but.
The property's just changed hands.
Okay, so then we would need, obviously.
Or it is in the process of changing hands. The property is under agreement for sale.
Okay.
I think there was a question, we just confirmed the question, that the material volumes, and I think Josh spoke to this at the last hearing, the material volumes, volumes as shown in the aggregate volume table are accurate. And they were accurate as of 2012 and they haven't really changed. Those are the volumes that are the volumes that have generally been volumes over the last number of years. With respect to snow and ice, I think this is a particularly interesting issue as to how you relate it to what are the 2012 volumes versus the 2015 volumes? We had a historic winter. There was a significantly greater need for snow and ice services this winter than there was in 2012. I think all we can say is they own two plows, a dump truck and a Bobcat that they use for the purpose of providing snow and ice services. It's an emergency service essentially that's provided to the town and to other private owners who need those services from time to time. Not sure that it's possible to detail a volume or a number of times. If you said 2012, which was a different winter, that you're limited to the number of calls out or business opportunities as you had in 2012, by the third week of February, they would be shut down. Whoever was relying on their plowing services would have to find somebody else to do it. I think that it's unique to snow and ice. Snow and ice is its own animal. I had a lot of experience when I was at Mass Highway. It ebbs and flows based on different winters and different conditions. So I think the best we can say is that the, that the equipment remains the same as it was in 2012. And the need for that service ebbs and flows based on, based on the winter.
And this, you're referring to the restatement of operations and mitigation plans? This is information you provided there?
I referred to the, yeah, I referred to paragraph six of my memo.
Okay.
And then the restatement of operations and mitigation plans is just a, it's basically restating what we've already said, a couple of minor changes where we, based on the latest additions of the plans, they adjust with respect to that. So there's an adjustment to the, and I don't have, I did not redline, but with respect to the parking plan, there's an adjustment because we, I cite the material in the parking generation manual, cite the number, the volumes, but also discuss the relocation, the proposed relocation of the equipment parking back to the landcare yard.
And on these restatement of operation mitigation plans, I should note for the people who are not looking at them right now, because they don't have them in front of them, that this is basically what they've done is, as far as I can tell, correct me if I'm reading this wrong, because that'd be useful to know, is that they've restated in a more compact form the information that was in the application, and then pulled out the mitigation measures that the applicant is proposing for these conditions.
That's right.
Is that, I'm reading this correctly? Okay.
Tried to, tried to respond to comments from the board that rather have in a concise format to say with respect to delivery plan, this is what we'll do. Deliveries will be, that will be charged to come from 93 up Randolph Avenue, left onto Hillside, left onto Forest and into the site, that there would be a clear pattern, clear directions provided to all deliveries, and careful control over that. They would work with the town to prepare signs, perhaps signs at the top of Chickatabut, no entry for trucks for Thayer Nursery, no signs, no waiting for deliveries to Thayer Nursery, particularly on Parkwood, on Harlan, other locations where trucks in the past might tend to wait if they're not able to get to someplace. Now, if there's a truck that's sitting on Parkwood because they're waiting to deliver to the farm that's across the street and the farm's not ready to receive it, that's a different issue. But at Thayer Nursery, there would be a sign clearly saying, no delivery. Those types of things with respect to delivery, for example, onsite operations, dealing with times of operations, times when equipment can be used, all equipment to be turned off by six on weekdays and 5:00 PM on Saturdays, backup alarms either deactivated or turned to lowest levels, those types of details and conditions that can be, you could take and write into a, the permit. That's the general overview of what we've proposed. I'm happy to take questions with respect to any of it and/or to turn it over to other comment.
Okay, I just want to note too, for people at home, in addition to the parking generation, and people here and at home, we received the parking generation, we received the memo regarding supplemental information, the restatement of operations and mitigation plans. We also have some proposed definitions from Wikipedia of various terms that were in the application that I think we'd requested at the last meeting, and the acoustics report in addition to the plans that Ned Corcoran just went over. Board members, do you have any questions on this material or what you've heard so far?
I have a number of questions.
Please go ahead.
The consultant doesn't list his qualifications as a consultant.
For the, for the sound attenuation?
For the sound attenuation. I've got to say that we spent a very significant amount of time determining that we would have a 10-foot chain link fence around two sides of this site with sound attenuation material on it. And in my view, this is the critical piece of making this operation work for everyone. And having someone, you know, having discussed that and having had, had expert material presented about the sound attenuation, saying that it was going to in fact do a good job attenuating the sound, to have someone come in at this point, weeks later, and say, no, 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 it wouldn't work at all, it's no good at all, you take away the fence and basically I think we're in the soup. And the soup being a sort of vast liquid body that one doesn't want to be in, because we want to make some progress here. We want to get something that works for the neighborhood and for the nursery. And the, you know, the changes you've made, you know, moving this stuff in are all good. They're all good, but they're not enough standing alone. We really need that fence, in my view. And I've looked at this. As I say, I don't know anything about Mr. Conick, whether he is, or about what the Oldfields did as far as saying this is what a Bobcat sounds like and where they were running it. You know, this is not enough for us to reverse directions, in my view. I would like to get on with this hearing and not go over and over and over the same stuff. I, you know, I think that we've made progress. I think the Oldfields have done a lot of stuff that is going to make for a quieter, better, more friendly operation, and I think it's likely to work, but the fence is part of it.
Can I say something? My concern why we decided to hire an acoustic engineer was the fear that when we install these fences, that what happens the day after we install, the week after, the month after, the year after, the three years after. And it doesn't do what the abutters wanted to do. So throughout this whole hearing, you guys have reiterated to the abutters, if things aren't working out, they can come back and our permit would be reviewed and possibly revoked. So we wanted assurance, we would like assurances from the board that if we do these fences that are significant, it's a significant expense to do this fence. It's about $60,000. So if we do this fence, I don't want a visit from the building inspector saying we're in violation of a noise, where I don't want to be back in front of the board saying, you know what, the fence didn't work. If we do fencing that you are proposing to do, I would like a predetermination that we're not ever back here, ever, over the noise of any Bobcat. And so what this does is it sets what ambient is. We hired an acoustic engineer and he came out, and if you can see at the bottom of the picture, it tells you exactly what he did. So figure one, he measured and calculated the sound levels for Bobcat operation. In figure two, it was sound levels for delivery trucks of unloading plus Bobcat noise. So we took the worst-case scenario.
A wood delivery truck.
The wood delivery truck would be minimal because that happens inside the barn, which acts as a buffer. The wood delivery is not the cause of the noise.
We did create the most intense noise that we could generate to test this.
Well, I mean, I hear you say that, but it would have been nice if there had been an independent observer there to say that, yes, indeed, they produced as much noise as they possibly could. You may be right, but you have an interest, a self-interest in saying that you made as much noise as possible. That's just the way these things work. I mean, people who have a self-interest usually testify to their self-interest.
Well, that's, we took the worst-case scenario. We had a delivery truck come in, we had our two Bobcats running, we had a truck running, and I had my delivery van running. We wanted, we wanted for our own assurances that what we were going to do would be worst-case ever.
These sounds, they calculated, then they show with a 10-foot barrier every place, but you, but in fact, you're saying you're not going to put up a 10-foot barrier?
Because that's only in front of the Tevens' property. Our proposal has never included a fence in front of the Tevens' property because, as Josh stated in an earlier hearing, we've already gone on to the Tevens' property and did a green buffer barrier on their property.
But there's no, there's no sound recordings on the Tevens' property?
This is what the Tevens' property looks like. There's a 90-foot depth planting plus another 30 feet to the property line.
I'm just, in, in respect to what Alex said, and some of the things I see on here, it appears that you're still putting up a 10-foot fence in the back.
Along the Joe Hedy Road.
What is the purpose of that?
For visual.
For our own visual.
For visual.
See, that's some of what plays in here. I think, I think the fence, you know.
Okay, what can we?
Fence works for sound, the fence works for visual. I'm sure some of the dust or things that can, you know, go airborne, the fence would take care of some of that. So the fence isn't, I don't think, just the sound. And I think, again, in respect to what Alex said, we spent an awful lot of time with that, and I think that was a big sticking point, and I thought we got to a point where people were, I don't know if I can say in agreement, but were almost on the same page. The backtrack, it just, it's going to be very difficult. And as far as getting assurances, nobody, we never get assurances on anything. Nobody does. There are no guarantees in life, like they say. But like you say, there's going to be, if it goes back to the board, there's certainly going to be an influence on the board that one side or the other made every attempt they could to mitigate things or not to. So I don't know that it would give you any assurance of anything, but it would certainly give you the, the evidence that you've made every effort to mitigate things, which is , is something.
Well, since we've been on the zoning board for the past numerous years, and we have shown our efforts, and I'm not reassured through this process.
The other neighbors don't have this. To me, that makes a huge difference without the things that you mentioned.
No, I realize that, and I realize that the people that you stated behind there have already made comments and they've already discussed this fence, like we said, and I thought we got to a position.
In fact, they brought in the specifications for the fence, and she's an architect.
I don't think she's not an architect.
What is she?
A designer.
A designer, okay.
It just seems like, to sum it up, it seems like we're backtracking a little bit, which I don't think is helpful to anybody.
Okay, we can take it under advisement. I mean, that's.
We understand it, but you also have to understand our position. It's a huge expense. And I've reached out to zoning board members and I've, I've said, I'm going to end up in front of you if, if Prandat comes out and says we're in violation. And.
Look, some of your, some of your neighbors are undoubtedly going to complain whatever gets done. What we're trying to do is something reasonable. It seems to me that we've heard a lot of information about the fence and about its ability to abate sound. And sound is a big deal. The dust, I think, can be controlled, the odors, I think can be controlled, the runoff, I think can be controlled. It seems to me that sound, the lights can be controlled. The sound is the, is the critical issue here. And the fence looks like it, from the information we have, looks like it's going to make a significant difference. And one hopes that no one will complain.
The, you, your sound expert, he indicates that, you know, a car is 63 decibels at 50 feet, and you make recordings around, you could certainly volunteer the information that, you know, you'd never expect to exceed 63 decibels, which in this case, you're saying you don't. So that in effect would be something that if people complain about sound and we decided that 63 decibels was an acceptable level, that that can be, that can be monitored.
It's a measurable condition that we have been talking about looking for. But we have been looking for that measurable condition, and that's a possibility.
But you could, you know, say, if we put this up, we, you know, that guarantees that at 50 feet from our property line, nobody's ever going to exceed 63 decibels as a result of the noise that we make. And that would be a measurable.
What other questions? I think, I think we should continue to identify anything else that we have concerns with as far as the information goes, while you guys take that back. Is there anything else, Ned, while the other members are looking through, in this restatement of operations mitigation that differs from comments that the board has made in the past? Or discussions that we've had during these public hearings?
I don't believe so. Let me just take a quick look back.
Tim, I don't know if you identified anything as you were going through. Tim, I don't know if you identified anything as you were going through.
Were you asking Tim?
I was asking you, but I was sort of, I'll say over to the Tim, so if you prepare.
Right here, sorry.
The real, the real change is the change out in, proposed change out on the fencing, and that's, everything else is, there's really nothing else that's of substance that's a change.
Everything else is basically fine-tuning, and you've done it, you've done a really quite good job at fine-tuning this. And I think that.
I think there's still a question on the hours that we haven't discussed yet that I would expect to talk about tonight, but everything else looked, everything else looked reasonably consistent with what I remember our discussions to be, so.
And I, you know, I do think deliveries of the wood and when the wood goes out is.
Is part of that.
I mean, I think that the wood is, is a significant operation, and if it could be relocated, it'd be best, but I'm prepared to, with some conditions, let the wood operation go forward.
Mike, I see Mike's still looking through things, just a couple of things on the information that you've presented tonight. Has the drainage plan been reviewed by the town engineer?
No.
Okay.
I don't, I don't, I know that they have met with.
We spoke with, we spoke with John Thompson, and we've gone over everything, but we were waiting to see the final, the final plans with him once we got the approval.
Just repeat that into the mic, sorry.
We spoke with John Thompson a while back, and we've gone over everything.
Why don't you come and introduce yourself?
Jim DeSalle, DeSalle Burke and Associates. We talked to John Thompson, the assistant engineer, and he, he reviewed everything, and everything looked good so far, but we didn't have a final plan at the time.
Okay.
And so we were waiting until everything settled, and then we're going to, we'll pull the final permits.
Okay, great. And we would expect, Tim, I think if we could get an email or a letter.
We would, we would want actually the engineer that described the drainage system to us to just get a feeling as to, so people can ask about.
Within the letter itself? We, that's what we usually do is.
I mean, we've got the engineer here.
Oh, you, I'm sorry, you meant, Tim, I thought you meant the town engineer when I was asking for a letter from the town engineer. Yes, please, please describe the drainage system.
Earlier on, we had originally just this cul-de-sac system that was going to collect most of the overland flow that I'm sure when people gone by during heavy rainstorms have seen the water cascading over the wall. We plan on capturing that water before the wall and recharging it into the ground in this area here, and then we're going to have an overflow that will go into the town system if that storm is such that it inundates the cul-de-sac system. But the cul-de-sac system's actually, the way it was designed, I don't see it going over. It's sort of what we designed. But what happened in the, since the last time I spoke of this drainage, was this, Josh had done some grading down at the bottom of the hill and where the wall is behind the Johanning Road property. So we're, we're proposing deepening the swale a little bit there and putting an overflow pipe into this cul-de-sac system so that there will be no water that if, if and during a heavy rain event, it's going to be two feet lower than the property line or the stone wall is at the Road-Johanning property. So it shouldn't go, it shouldn't be able to go beyond, it'll hit the pipe before it goes over the wall.
So the idea is that it will capture all of the flow on the property itself and move it into the system, and then it won't tie into the town system unless it's a major storm that overflows? Okay.
And what is a major storm?
We designed it for a 100-year storm, so it'd have to be greater than that.
You're going to put, you're going to fill that with stone?
Yes.
Like three-inch or something?
Even smaller.
And then along the Lepore property?
And then along the Lepore property, we had proposed, because we're putting that little berman, we put a, Josh has actually already installed that, the trench, and at the end of the trench, we're going to put in a manhole that ties into a leaching pit system that will handle that water.
Okay, so that water is not then being connected to the secondary system?
That's just being recharged.
Okay.
Exactly.
Any questions?
Do any of the, I mean, we've had drainage comments from.
We'll get all the public comments at once, as we've been doing. They will be able to ask, absolutely.
You have to stick around.
Yes, you may not leave. So one thing that the board will be looking for as we consider the conditions is the timeline for when all of these things can be installed. So if a special permit is granted by the board that becomes, you know, day zero from then, how long until all of the plants are installed? How long until the drainage is completely installed? How long until any of the other physical mitigation measures, the fence, if we decide that we want the hard pack? How long do those things take to be installed so that we can write that into the special permit itself, if we grant one?
I, I think ASAP, that the, my other experience with Joe Prondak on this is that he, he won't issue a certificate of occupancy until the measures required in the permit have been installed.
I think ASAP is going to be too general for our purposes. We need to be, yeah, but, but I think.
I made to say that he, they won't be able to operate under the permit, I don't think, until the measures have been installed.
But I think what we want to do is, obviously, the measures are going to require their own noise and disruption, and so what we want to do is be able to say that it's going to be three weeks for this to be done, six weeks for that to be done, two weeks for that, whatever it is, so that people understand that there may be excess noise, dust, whatever, that is a result of mitigation measures being implemented, so.
Catch 22.
So will you actually put time limits on this?
Yes, as part of the conditions.
Because part of us, if we have to get financing for, so it might not happen until we get financing, so if you're asking, like, can we do it in six weeks, or eight weeks, or 10 weeks, I'm not really sure.
I think what we would do is work with you to determine those timelines, but the point is to ensure that everybody understands what would be happening when. So if you need to get financing for something, we can work that into the timeline, but just, it's partly so that we know what's happening and partly so that the neighborhood also knows what's happening. So if there is additional noise, I think you had already started working on the hardscape in the back, which created additional noise. It's an easy way of saying, yes, you should expect in these weeks to hear noise related to this, and then we work on that.
I think it's a simple quantification, like everything we're talking about here.
Yeah.
I mean, I understand what you said, but, you know, something could come up and you could say, well, we don't really need the permit for another year, so when are you going to get to it? But we don't want to see that happen.
Right.
We don't want to leave and issue a permit and say.
That's, that's fair. We'll, we'll, we'll work on.
Okay.
It just makes sense.
Yeah, and if you have to build, I mean, we understand things like weather, too, but building in a reasonable amount, so it's transparent to everybody what exactly is happening when. Any other questions from board members at this point? So there's a few things that we have, and the questions were on what we've talked about or has been presented already. There are a few things that we have not yet gotten to. We've finished up, as Tim said, with building plans. We need to talk about hours. We need to talk about lighting. Let's see, we talked a little bit about street improvements already. We can talk a little bit about signs. The list of vehicles has been provided. And we need to talk about firewood, which we haven't done previously. I think those are the, anything else that members feel that they'd like to? I'd like to have touch on these issues before we ask for public comments so that the public is able to also comment on these. So we could start with hours, if you like.
We had a.
I didn't, I didn't reprint a copy of that chart.
Which showed different locations that had their hours and the relative comparison of what we're looking for here?
Yeah.
Let me see if I've got it with me. I had a couple of things on this.
And I know you gave it also. It's not your fault, it's everybody's fault if I don't have it.
The bylaw is, is pretty clear as to what the hours are. I think the only issue that I was able to identify is related to, there is a, and you'll have to forgive me for having to look through this.
This is the new bylaw.
The one that we're talking about.
Yeah.
Issuing the special permit under. In terms of whether equipment can be used at 8:00 in the morning on weekdays, or 7:00 in the morning on weekdays, 9:00 AM on Saturdays, or 8:00 AM on Saturdays. The bylaw, basically, it's up to the discretion of the board to determine if that extra hour is reasonably necessary for the business.
So that the bylaws set 8:00 on weekdays and 9:00 on the weekends?
With the caveat that if the board determines that starting at 7:00 is reasonably necessary for the business.
Right.
The special permit is allowed to allow.
We can, we can start at an hour earlier on weekdays, or an hour earlier on the Saturday. Obviously, Sundays, it's not permitted. I believe the zoning says that it should be, they have to justify why they would need that. The other consideration, too, is what are the current hours of operation for the nursery? So, because there will be, you know, we may want to make them consistent, or we may not want to make them consistent.
Section 7E of the bylaw is, page 18 on your.
Again, I'd be curious to see what some of the other nursery slash landscaping businesses in town.
I can, I can go grab that document real quick.
Why don't you grab the document, and we'll move on to something else while you do that. So what about lighting, then? So the plan shows lighting on here. We had some comments from neighbors earlier about some of the lights potentially producing, or currently producing glare, and then potentially, would they produce glare in the future? So I think one of the things that we would want to consider is how to position those lights, not just to prevent overspill on the property, from their property to the other properties, but because they're, actually, most of the lights are fairly central, it's also preventing glare.
Isn't that overspill?
Well, there's a, I think, I think what I'm trying to do is differentiate between property line here, light here, and overspill that way. So you've got the light here, you've got a property line here, and then the light is actually spilling over to the property, as opposed to, say, you're on your, your porch looking out, and then there's a light. Yeah, you can see it glaring at you, so it's not actually spilling onto the property, but you're getting a glare there.
So you don't want something looking like the moon?
I think that's reasonable, yes, so.
Yeah, I think, I think the overspill is the more, and I agree with what you're saying, but I think the overspill is the more important.
Well, I, I think if they're directed downwards, which they should be.
Then the glare shouldn't be an issue.
There should be now, you shouldn't see the moon.
Right, exactly. But it's just making sure that we, if we, again, if we grant this, that we write that into the condition. I want to make sure we're all on board.
I think you make a good point. It would be hard to have them not overspill in glare. I mean, they'd be visible, but there's nothing I can do about my neighbor that lives five houses away that I can see his second-story light on at 12:00 at night, that's.
Well, that's not, that's not glare, that's, that's visibility. Glare is, for example, I was at the planning, the board of selectmen meeting earlier this week, and we were talking about the sign for the garage. This was part of the agreement that we had at town meeting, and so they have the numbers for the gas prices there, and those numbers are glaring into somebody's bedroom. It's not that they're just, it's not just that they're visible, the light is actually, you know, intensifying in the bedroom, and that's what I want to avoid.
No, I think, again, where, if the lights are pointed down, they don't overspill the property line, then they, then the fact, the fact that they're pointed down will eliminate the possibility that it could glare.
Eliminate the glare itself. Okay, so was there any, that, that's good. I wanted to make sure that we were all on the, the same level on that. Is there anything else related to lighting? This is on page 10, which is actually the second page in of our matrix here. So we talk about where it is, where it's located, that requirements, the design should be appropriate to a residential neighborhood, and light levels should be low. And then, and that's it for lighting, so.
If I may.
Yes, of course.
Respect to that. There are four lights, I think we highlighted, one on the barn facing east, one on each side of the garden shop, and one on the corner of the wood barn that look substantially like that, they're fairly intense spotlights, and I think we propose that those would be directed downward and that they would be a covering.
A hood.
A hood would be placed on it.
Great.
To prevent that.
You know, it's, it's simple geometry. I mean, if the face of the light is pointed like this, and it hits the ground before the property line, then you're fine. And hood on the top will stop any further.
The hood will stop the further glare.
Yes, okay.
And I think that was proposed.
Okay.
Well, and if you look at the photometric plan currently as it is, it does not go over the property line, so it is facing down and.
Which is why I was less concerned about the overspill, yeah. Street improvement plan. So we have a proposal to add that additional hard pack on the corner for the truck turning. We've received, this is on page 11, we have received, obviously, the turning template that we had requested, but there is a question as to whether or not we like the idea of that hard pack, so I want to throw that open to the board to discuss.
I think that the neighbors should be able to weigh in on it. I think it's one of the worst proposals I have had come before me in some years. Hillside Street is, I don't know, 50 feet wide. If one were to hard pack, tear down all the trees and walls and hard pack the, the sides of that, you'd get a nice 50-foot roadway, but you would lose everything that Hillside Street is currently known for. This is just not a good idea. I mean, the people who live in, lived in this house until they sold it, put stones out to keep the trucks off that grassy strip. The idea of hard packing it so that the truck's going to roll over right up to their fence is, I, I'm against it.
So your concern is that the hard pack would make it easier for the trucks to go over that area because they, because they would see it as just an extension of the road?
And the other side is already hard packed, and so the horses can use that side, and, you know, it, it's, it's just too much. It's too much, and it's unnecessary.